So what's the point? That is perfect. So... The man who... And then they'll ask for a... So you... Take the... Is that...
Yeah.
Okay. Um, we don't... Um, we don't... Um, yeah. Um, we don't... Um, yeah. Um, we don't... Um, yeah. 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 Yeah.
I'd like to call this regular meeting of the City Council of October 15th, 2020 to order. Would you please call a roll?
Zingy, here. Gage, here. Bergeron?
Here.
Can you say it again?
Here.
There you go. Kifer?
Here.
Flora?
Here.
Gas?
Here.
Bradbury?
Here.
Thank you very much. Would you please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. I'd also, the Ketchikan City Council would like to respectfully acknowledge the traditions of the first people of this land in Ketchikan, the Tongas Klinkit tribe. We are now down to communications to start off. Abner, do you have an update for us?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Abner Hoag, emergency manager. It's been a few weeks since I came and gave you an update on our COVID-19 response. Unfortunately, tonight I do have some updates that I want to give you, so if you can bear with me for a little bit here. As of today, we now have five active cases and we have 64 recovered. We did have a new positive today. We also had a new positive yesterday and one on Monday, and all three of those cases have been determined to be community-spread. And with that, that brings us back up to a Level 2 risk category, which was announced in our press release today. If things continue to remain calm from here going forward, by early next week, I expect we'll go back down to Level 1. That will require the community to continue to do their part as they have, practice a good social distancing, wear their masks, avoid large group events and those sorts of activities in order to keep our counts low. And they've done a good job of that overall. We've crept up into Level 2 and then we creeped back down into Level 1. So we're keeping the curve low and we're doing an overall good job of that. With that in mind, I can also tell you there are some other viruses going around our community, specifically the rhinovirus. There have been cases of that. Our drive-up testing site is now utilizing the BioFire machine at Creekside to process the tests for the drive-up testing, and they're able to process those tests within about 24 hours or less. And in addition, that test that they're using tests for 22 different respiratory viruses and bacteria, and one of those is the rhinovirus, which is the common cold. So when you get that test through our drive-up testing, you can actually know not only that you don't have coronavirus potentially, but that you have rhinovirus, or sometimes the other way around, hopefully not. But a very good test and good for our community, good for us to be able to get those results quickly, identify anyone that someone who's positive may have been in contact with, and isolate them as well so that we can keep the virus contained. There's also some changes to Health Mandate 10 that came out today. The governor announced new changes on the website. There's three major changes that took place in that document. Number one is that the requirement for strict social distancing upon arrival from travel out of state or internationally has been reduced to five days instead of the seven to 14 days that it was previously. You're with one negative test. A second test is no longer mandated, it's optional. It can be taken between five and 14 days after arrival, and it can still be taken at no cost at the traveler testing site, at berth 3, or back at the airport. The third major change to Health Mandate 10 is that the time period that a resident can travel out of state and then return and not be required to test was 24 hours, and that's been increased to 72 hours. So you can travel out of state up to 72 hours, and under the mandate, you're not required to test. As with any in-state travel, you can still choose to test if you return from that and you're a resident and you want to help make sure that you're not bringing something back. We will still test you, you're fine to do that, and you can have that confidence that you don't have a positive. So with this recent couple of cases that have come out in the community, I saw something that someone posted on Facebook today, that great news source that we all go to, because it's not real until it's there. But I read something on there this morning that I thought really hit home a key point that I want to share with all of you and with our community. And I wasn't able to contact the person who posted it, so I'm not going to say who posted it, but this is a story from someone that they posted on there. It says, "When I developed a cold right before school started," someone in our community, "when I developed a cold right before school started, I had so much anxiety waiting for my COVID test results. I wasn't afraid of having COVID, I was afraid of the public attention and response if I did. I feared the shame of catching an incredibly contagious virus." Can you believe that? "I see a lot of fear mongering going on about the recent positive student case. This is someone's child, this is still a family that it affects. These aren't people who violated orders to quarantine, they were just the lucky few. I encourage us, the awesome community that we are, to come alongside those in need. We don't need to know names to send prayers, blessings, healing vibes. Also, keep health themes in your thoughts too, as they investigate the lines of contagion. They may be successful and swift. We got this, Ketchikan, we're a community with a lot of heart, and I love to see when we use it for good. Stay safe." And to me, the point of that that just really struck home is that we need to not attach a stigma to someone who tests positive for COVID-19. Any of us can catch this virus, and it doesn't mean that we necessarily did anything wrong. If I'm a student and I go to school today and tomorrow I test positive, or I start to exhibit symptoms, you're considered to be in an infectious period up to two days prior to exhibiting symptoms the first time. And so there's a good potential that I was at school and didn't even know that I was sick. And as a result, the school needs to shut down for at least 24 hours so they can run through their plan, they can disinfect the school. It doesn't mean that the student did anything wrong. And the same with our businesses that go above and beyond to close. Doesn't necessarily mean that anyone did anything wrong, and we need to keep that in mind and not attach a stigma, because the sooner that people get tested and they're not afraid of that, and we can figure out who they may have had contact with and keep that virus boxed in, the more quickly we can return back or keep ourselves in Level 1. So that's what I have for you tonight, unless there's any questions, Mr. Mayor.
Any questions? Thank you, Abner.
I have one.
Yes.
Are they still doing the nasal swab for that test, or is it...
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Still under communications, the next one I'd like to read, a joint proclamation of the Ketchikan Gateway Borough and the City of Ketchikan, where there are approximately 900,000 law enforcement officers serving in the communities across the United States, including sworn officers in the City of Ketchikan, Police Department, State Alaska Troopers, and many other peace and federal officers stationed in Ketchikan. Whereas those officers work devotedly and selfishly on behalf of the citizens of the Ketchikan Gateway Borough, regardless of the peril or hazard to themselves. And whereas Ketchikan crime rates are 103% higher than the national average, with a yearly increase of 15%, and local efforts to ensure justice include response to and investigate more than 8,664 criminal offenses and conducting 578 arrests each year. Whereas in addition to performing the official duties, our officers support and participate in community organization events such as First City Homeless Service, Empty Bowl Dinner, Peace House Shoe Solstice Auction, Peace House Fair, Salvation Army Soup Kitchen, and the Wellness Coalition Domestic Violence and Sexual Assault Task Force, Behavior Health Action Groups, Local Emergency Planning Committee, Stomp the Stigma, Red Ribbon Week, Special Olympics Torch Run, Peace House First Baby of the Year, Officer Bob Cheatham. And whereas other officers provide ongoing safety education to our community through programs such as School Resource Officer Programs, High School Student Ride Along Programs, Dare, Ghost Out, Halloween, Safety Awareness, Mandatory Report Training, Alice, which is Alert, Lockdown, Inform, Counter, and Evacuate, civilian active shooting training, Drug Awareness and Identification, Youth Mental Health Perstade, Crisis Communication Techniques, and De-escalation Techniques, Critical Incident Stress Management, and Citizens Academy. And whereas our local Ketchikan Police Department has gone above and beyond the line of duty by organizing programs such as Coffee with a Cop, Jackson Street Halloween Safety and Candy Distribution, Shop with a Cop, Elementary School, KPD, Christmas Card Contest, and Public Safety Expo. Now there, on behalf of the citizens of the City of Ketchikan and the Ketchikan Gateway Borough, we, Bob Silverson, City Mayor, and Rodney Nile, Borough Mayor, hereby commend the tireless and sacrificial actions of local law enforcement and thank them for their dedicated service to our community. They truly make Ketchikan a better place to live. Signed on behalf of the Ketchikan Gateway Borough and the City of Ketchikan on this, the 5th day of October 2020. Do I have somebody here to receive that?
Well, thank you, Mayor Bob Silverson, and I do accept on behalf of Chief White, who's out of town currently, but I thank you, I thank you tremendously. I appreciate the opportunity to be able to stand up here and accept this proclamation. It's appreciated, the men and women at the Police Department appreciate it. And 2020's been pretty crazy as far as the start of the year and where we're at today. As the Police Department, I'll tell you that we, sometimes we get it wrong, sometimes we get it right. But we'll always be here for you, for your families, for our families. And I just thank you, I thank you for the responsibility, the authority, the powers that you give us and allow us to participate in the community. So again, I thank you, I thank all the businesses, the nonprofits, the everybody that we can be involved with. So on behalf of everyone at the Police Department, I thank you, I appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you. (applause) So another official proclamation. Whereas alcohol and drug abuse in this nation has reached an epidemic proportions, and whereas cities across the nation have been plagued by the numerous problems associated with drug and alcohol abuse. And whereas it is imperative that visible unified efforts by community members be launched to prevent drug abuse, and whereas businesses, government, law enforcement, media, healthcare providers, religious institutions, schools, and other community-based organizations will demonstrate their commitment to healthy, drug-free lifestyle by wearing red ribbons. And whereas success will not occur without patience and a continued commitment to drug education and prevention, which is imperative. Whereas the National Red Ribbon Week celebration has been established by the National Family Partnership to help create awareness of the drug problems facing every community by developing parent and community teams to combat illegal drugs and to promote drug-free lifestyles for American youth. And whereas October 23rd through the 31st of 2020 has been designated National Red Ribbon Week, all Americans are called upon to show their support for drug-free nations by wearing a red ribbon during the week. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Robert Silverson, Mayor of the City of Ketchikan, Alaska, do hereby proclaim October 23rd through 31st of 2020 as Red Ribbon Week in Ketchikan, and encourage all citizens, business, public and private agencies, media, religious, and education institutes to participate in drug prevention education activities, not only during Red Ribbon Week, but also throughout the year, making a visible statement that we are strongly committed to a drug-free lifestyle by wearing red ribbons, and to join the rest of the nation in promoting the National Red Ribbon Celebration and Drug-Free America. There's somebody here to accept this proclamation on...
My name is Carlos Wymer, and I'm the Director for the Drug-Free Communities Program at the Wellness Coalition. And on behalf of the Wellness Coalition, we thank you for this proclamation. And we think that we need to be loud about our prevention message, so we thank you for allowing us this proclamation. And that'll be it for me. Thank you so much.
So a question. Where do we get our red ribbons?
You can get your red ribbon at the Wellness Coalition. We're right next to TBC at 602 Doc Street, number 108.
Thank you.
And you can also join us for our cruise-by caravan on the 28th of October. We'll be driving by the schools and with some prevention messaging. So you can email or check out the Wellness Coalition on the website to find out more or contact me. I'm available at your convenience as well.
Thank you.
Awesome, thanks.
(applause) So another proclamation. Whereas the Americans with Disability Act, ADA, was passed on July 26th, 1990 to ensure the civil rights of citizens with disabilities. And whereas the City of Ketchikan, Alaska, affirms the principles of equality and inclusion for persons with disabilities as set forth by the laws of the State of Alaska and the ordinances of the City of Ketchikan, Alaska, as embodied in the ADA. And whereas we recognize Honorable U.S. Supreme Court Justice Ruth B. Ginsburg, who was best known for standing up for women's rights, but who also played a key role in ensuring the rights of people with disabilities. And whereas the Honorable U.S. Supreme Court Justice Ruth B. Ginsburg, landmark 1999 ruling of Omstead versus L.C. Ginsburg staunch affirmation of human dignity of people with disabilities and their rightful place in the community of their choice, fundamentally changing the course of thousands of people who live with disabilities. And whereas numerous organizations in Ketchikan and Alaska work with constituents and communities to bring forth the promise of hope, freedom, with the envision by passage of the ADA. And whereas Ketchikan recognized the talents and skills of Americans and Alaskans with disabilities, and the resolve and the determination for strengthening our community and inspiring us all, together we will continue to advance and promote the inclusive workforce in which everyone can provide for themselves and their families, achieve the American dream, and enjoy the prosperity of our great nation. And whereas the City of Ketchikan recognized that Congress by joint resolution approved on August 11th, 1945, as amended 36th USC 121, would designate October each year as National Disability Employment Awareness Month, with a theme for 2020 as Increasing Access and Opportunity. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Robert Silverson, Mayor of the City of Ketchikan, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2020 as National Disability Employment Awareness Month. And to observe 2020 as the 30-year anniversary of the American and Disability Act, encourage employers to hire qualified Alaskans with disability and advance the important message that individuals with disabilities are valued in an Alaska workforce. Do I have somebody here to accept this proclamation?
I'm pretty glad that this act is in place for people with disabilities, because I am... I have a job at the Rexler. Monkeys, kids, while they're skiing. And I've been there for eight years. And I love it. I also have a little joke in the summer where I sing, sing my favorite songs and share my favorites with the people off the cruise ships in the summertime.
Hello, my name is John Williams. I worked at the hospital for nine years, I shredded the records and helped in laundry, and then I also do, in the summertime, what my cousin Jen did. I do the Native Indian dancing and tour host, and I really like it. And thank you guys for the proclamation.
Yeah, we... My name is Tyler McNeil with Community Connections, and we just appreciate the recognition of the vibrance that everyone adds to our community and the opportunities for expanded employment for everyone. So, thank you.
Thank you. That brings us down to item four, which is persons. Have you heard? Madam Clerk?
Our first speaker tonight is Deborah Hayden, representing Grow Ketchikan.
Hello again.
Hello.
We met last week. We have some new members since the last time I was here. Welcome to the council and thank you for your service. The last time we talked about various ways of funding and moving forward with the program that Grow Ketchikan has for creating, helping existing businesses find new markets for their products. And we pointed out that one of the big problems that we're having right now is that businesses have lost markets, and one of our potential clients has lost 85% of their revenue. So we hope to be able to ameliorate that, and we're moving forward with that. And I want to do, I've just been thinking, and I appreciated very much the presentation we had last night. I watched it on streaming about the budget. And one of the suggestions from the last meeting was that we approach the community grant process for funding for this program. And I got to thinking that, well, the budget reserves this year are $5 million, and they're projected to be, if nothing changes, I guess, $2 million by the end of the next fiscal year. So that's a considerable loss in revenue for the city, which means also considerable pressure on the amount of money that's available for community grants. So the number of nonprofits that come to the community grant... that come to the community grant program, they're going to, there's going to have to be some cuts, it looks like, in the amounts that they've been customarily getting. And so I don't think in good conscience that Grow Ketchikan can go and ask for money from that program and decide that one of those other nonprofits is going to get less, that much less, because we're in the mix. So I would like to continue pursuing the CARES Act money. And it occurs to me that after the election, things will change in regard to the CARES Act. One of the big pushes is to extend that deadline. That's been one of our stumbling blocks, is whether the money could be spent by that deadline of December 30. And it would be difficult. It was a good thing to point that out. And that was one of the problems when we tried to construct our budget, is in, you know, putting it into that little, you know, two-and-a-half-month pocket, the numbers kept going up and up. If we can spread it out over a year, those numbers would look a little bit better, and it would look like more continuity in the program and in the way we spend the money and in the way that the actions play out over several more months. So, we're going to bide our time, wait for the election, see what happens, and then see what happens with the CARES Act. And then hopefully work with the city staff. If it turns out that there's CARES Act money and that the deadline gets extended and things like that work out, that we would come back and work with the city on a future strategy for moving forward with the program. I just wanted to introduce those ideas tonight and say that's where we are and where we're going to go. That's all.
Thank you, Deborah.
Agnes Moran and Donita Adell with First City Homeless Services.
We're just here to let you know that we'll be available down for any questions you might have when the Alaska Community Foundation Grant comes up. And I'm also on your agenda for the WISH update, but I have staff who I think you probably would rather hear from because you hear way too much of me as it is. And so JD Martin actually will be doing the WISH presentation tonight.
Thank you.
Bobby McQuerry with KYI, Ketchikan Youth Initiatives.
Be done by an excellent KYI past member. I'd like to say thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today. I wrote the speech, so you can follow it. And I'm assuming you have that information. Can you hear me with the mask on?
Yeah.
A little bit closer. That would work, huh? Okay, let's do that. Although this is not the vision I had for its youth when the city had scheduled the Old Water Warehouse, just a minute here, there we go, for demolition, and KYI convinced them to grant this 100-year-old building for use as a youth center. This building will now be used to provide shelter to another underserved population, those who are homeless. When first approached in August, the KYI Board understood and supported the need for this additional sheltering need created by COVID-19. They made a good faith offer for use of this building up to three seasons to give the city time to develop a long-lasting plan for the homeless population. The city chose to send notice of noncompliance to KYI for failure to continually occupy the facility as a youth center. Rather than extend this process into a legal battle that would delay filling the immediate need for cold weather sheltering, KYI accepted why the city had to use this strategy. This, even though the quitclaim deed did not address a completion date nor any funding goals, and most likely would not have triggered such a notice except for COVID-19. It was a cheap answer for the city and a serious disappointment for all those who supported and participated over the past 10 years. The newly formed KYI Board is comprised of a competent team of youth leaders ages 18 to 30 that accounts for six of its seven members mentored by two adults. This board struggled diligently to explore and discuss numerous solutions about how community partners could work together to solve these current and rapidly increasing needs. And I just say, how better could this team have demonstrated the KYI vision of youth leadership with mentored support? I am extremely proud of their effort and grateful to continue my retirement. KYI is now counting on a concerted effort from the city to be engaged and supportive of efforts made to serve the needs of youth as they change the use of this building to a homeless shelter and not to overlook the needs of our homeless youth, especially during the existing and upcoming stressors of the pandemic as these youth struggle to live an active and meaningful adult life with sufficient resources to provide healthy lives for themselves and their families. Otherwise, we just expand the size of the homeless population. In 2008, KYI convinced the city to pass on the Old Water Warehouse free of mortgage or rent payments. It would also provide the opportunity for income from leases with other youth-serving organizations to cover the costs of utilities and maintenance. The result? The end goal would be realized to dedicate incoming revenue solely for the support of operations and youth programming, something most nonprofits in Ketchikan are unlikely to achieve without ownership of their building. The site was a prime resource for sales to passing tourists with the art shop and with a culinary arts program in the works. Unfortunately, by the time the building was transferred to KYI in 2009, all funding bets were off. We were in the middle of the Great Recession. Over time, $522,000 has been donated by our community to bring the center to its current stage of completion, 85%. You have, you have a piece of paper that shows those figures. This value does not include the hundreds and hundreds of hours of volunteer work and donated materials. The Old Water Warehouse is now worth over $1 million. Thank you, Ketchikan. Looking forward, the KYI Board seeks additional volunteers and mentors and is very grateful for the opportunities to collaborate with the Ketchikan Wellness Coalition and Residential Youth Care. A customized survey was developed for the disconnected youth ages 15 to 24 to identify their principal resource needs. I've provided the council with this poster and an explanation of the purpose of this survey. Everyone, please take the opportunity to get those youth, who are not usually very visible, engaged in this important survey process. The survey can be accessed now on the KYI Facebook page by scanning the poster and the QR code, or through many community partners. Survey results will be provided to any youth-serving organization in our community to guide their decisions regarding future programming for this at-risk youth segment of our community. I invite you all to join this important community outreach. A volunteer application will be posted on the KYI Facebook page, or contact kyi@admin@kyiyouth.org. This is your opportunity to step up and carry forward an important initiative to serve the teens and young adults of our community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
JP Martin, representing himself. Herself. Sorry. I bitch.
Thank you for taking the time to listen to me today. You're going to hear more from me later on behalf of WISH. But to start off with, a community member messaged me and asked if I would speak a little bit about the fact that, sorry, I'm umming so much. I appreciate that you all had your proclamation for Disability Awareness Month, and October is also Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And so I just wanted to speak briefly about the intersection of those two things. Disabled women experience domestic violence at almost twice the rate of their peers. And when disabled individuals experience domestic violence, it tends to be longer lasting and more intense than victims without a disability. Perpetrators of domestic violence against individuals with a disability use tactics such as removing mobility aids like canes and wheelchairs, withholding medication or other forms of care. They use emotional abusive tactics such as telling the victim that no one else will love them, or that the victim is worthless, or holding them back. Disabled individuals are at particular risk of being isolated and unable to leave their abusive partners, especially if they are dependent on their partners for care, health insurance, housing, or other needs. So I just wanted to, you know, appreciate that you're acknowledging disability in the community and the importance and the vulnerability of that particular population. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Bill Mack.
Good evening. So I'm here regarding Jackson Street Halloween this year, and I'm asking the city council to maybe make a decision to persuade the Ketchikan Police Department to block off Jackson Street as a public safety issue at Monroe and Seventh, as they've done the last 20 years. For the kids, we'll start off with, it's quite a public safety issue. I was there the other day decorating at 909, where we've had a house since 1983. And kids at 3:15 are still going up the hill bombing at 40 miles an hour. I'm surprised there's no police presence at that time. But it's going to be no different. The kids are going to come out one way or another for Halloween this year. And I believe, you know, I've spoken with Mr. Hoag and Mr. White at length about it on the phone. And I understand their position, but a lot of parents are going to let their kids go out because they are wearing masks, they're outdoors. And a lot of the residents we've spoken with have mandated the way that they're going to hand out candy. We've changed our way, where it used to be inside the entryway. This year it'll be outside in a tent, we'll have a table. Whoever's outside will have gloves on to make it a bit more safe. Spoken with several of the other neighbors, to my knowledge, only one person has had anything negative to say about it. And it seems like everybody is really behind it. While it doesn't carry a lot of legal weight, I went to change.org and just started a little petition to see what kind of wheels I could get going for it. And I came up with 463 signatures over the course of 20 days, not even that much, maybe 15. And 92% of them were quantifiable to local Ketchikan residents. So I'd like to see if maybe you guys could consider recommending that the KPD take their time and block that off on Halloween yet again for us. It's not really like we're asking you guys to say you're sponsoring or condoning the event. It's just more of a public safety matter.
Thank you.
Richard, and I can't read his last name with the Tongas Tribe. Jackson? Okay, I could get the J, but.
Thank you. My name's Mr. Jackson from the Tonduquan. I put Tongas Tribe because it's easier to say. That means the sea lion people. I'm here to thank the council for the acknowledgement of the Tongas Tribe. And I can't do it without the opposite side of my people here. So I asked Joel Buchanan, who is part of the Kennedick family, if he would come forward. I was on the Kanee, or would you say, you know, who he is and where he's from, because this land here is from their side of the family, from the Drift to Shorehouse, the one Ullashi Hitt house where the Johnson Pole is standing right now. So, we just wanted to make it formal that we welcome you to the land in perpetuity. We have a good relationship with Ketchikan. As I know it, and I've seen everybody here through my life, particularly the Seversons. I was in the Navy with one of his relatives, George. And I just wanted to introduce Joel Buchanan to respond for the people that live on this land from the Raven side of the Tonduquan.
Thank you, Richard. Gunestich. Mayor Severson, honorable council members, esteemed elders, staff of the city and KPU management, members of the community. For those that don't know me, my name is Joel Buchanan. I'm Tonduquan Ganahadi, one Ullashi Hitt, from the sea lion people, Raven Moeti, Drift to the Shorehouse. So, I want to say thank you very much from the heart that you've taken the time, one, to acknowledge us, but two, to learn the true history of the people that were here at first contact. So, it means a lot to us. And I would also like to say I mean no disrespect for those that are behind me. Speaking with my back to you, I mean you no disrespect. So, it's an honor to be here tonight. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your efforts. And thank you for the time to learn about the first people that were here. It means a lot to us. Gunestich.
Gunestich.
Also, I'd like to acknowledge the first people of the other nations that are here, Hides and the Simtians. Also, past fellow council members of KIC. I was the president a couple of times. But thank you very much. And we say gunestichoho. That means very much. Thank you.
Jay Mitani.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Me again. Don't beat me up as the statements that I'm about to make. Number one, as we negotiate the lease with Peace Health, were you aware the last two weeks, the ICU shut down because there was a management snafu, which is so dangerous because they had no staffing? There needs to be checks and balances with the hospital. They literally had to fly people that were in danger out, and they had no staffing. This should not happen. This should not have happened at the hospital. Next, cruising. Conversation with PPI, which is Panoff Publication Inc. that handles or promotes stores onboard cruise lines. Conversations with management there and they with some of their stores. They're talking about telling people that have stores in Juneau and Skagway. And here, it might be in their best interest to shut Ketchikan stores down because of the lack of time, the cruise ships being here, and because of the bubble, they won't encourage shopping here. They'll encourage people to shop in Juneau and elsewhere. So, like the manager was talking about last night, we need to start a conversation and start a conversation now with the cruise lines. See how, as an island, we can be a bubble. All of us can be a bubble. Otherwise, 90% of the businesses will suffer here. Start a conversation where if their excursions and their stores can disinfect and follow protocol, so can the rest of us. We need to start the conversation now. This conversation with PPI was very, very disheartening today. Third, please don't beat me up. There was a statement made yesterday that you represent people that were born here. But Ketchikan is such a unique community. here, but Ketchikan is such a unique community. Ketchikan is a community that is made up of people born here, people that have lived here, people that have flourished here, people that enjoy this place, people that are grateful to be here. You all represent not only people that were born here, but people that live here, are part of this unique community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jay.
Your Honor, that's the end of the list.
Thank you. That was the last one. All right, so let's move on to consent agenda. As I look at the agenda, if there are no disagreements, I'd like to put Item 6A1, Appointments in Boards and Commissions, on consent. I'd also like to add Item 7A5 and 7A6. Without objection. Do I have a motion?
Move to consent.
I have a second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Madam Kirk, would you please read the items?
Approval of Minutes, Special City Council Meeting of September 23rd, 2020. 2020 COPS Official School Violence Prevention Program SVPP Grant. Mayor Luana License Renewal for Northern Lights Cultivation II. An Award of Contract 2018 for 2021/23 Diesel Generator Fuel Supply with Petromarine Services. Exempting the procurement of space and power for subsea fiber coherent optical transport system equipment from competitive bidding. Written quotation requirements of the Ketchikan Municipal Code with City West Cable and Telephone. Appointments to Boards and Commissions from Mayor Severson. I think it was Steve Wilsie was appointed to the Port and Harbors Board?
Correct.
Is that correct? FYI, 2022 Community of Ketchikan Capital Project and Policy Issue Priority List Lobbying Executive Committee. Professional Services Agreement for Installation of Public Art at the Tongas Historical Museum by Rhonda Green, DBA Salvage Divas.
Any council member have comments? Yes?
I first want to say thank you to the Ketchikan Police Department and the school district for working together to get this grant to increase safety at our schools, especially during the time when you guys are seeing budget cuts. So thank you for that. And then secondly, I want to speak towards the installation of public art at the museum. I absolutely love this idea. I'm glad that somebody finally did it there. It's a great location. I would hope to encourage to see that more around town on more public property.
Thank you. Anybody else? Hearing in Tene, Madam Kirk, would you please call the roll?
Gas?
Yes.
Kifer?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Bradbury?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Bergeron? Can you repeat that, Mr. Bergeron? I didn't have your mic on.
Can you hear me?
We can, I can hear you. Go ahead.
Yes, I said yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So that passes the consent agenda. It moves us on into new business, but before there was one more communication that was laid on your table as an item, and that's a letter from the State of Alaska Department of Environmental Conservation in regards to our drinking water system. And Carl, you can probably expand on that during the manager report. Thank you. And again, we do have the budget calendar before us on the table, too. So, new business, Presentation by Women in Safe Home, Executive Director Update of Agency Programs and Activities. Welcome.
Hello again. So my name is JD Martin. I am a prevention, education, and outreach advocate with Wish. And like Agnes Moran said, she thought you'd rather hear from me than her, so I'm going to speak about our new activities and grants that we've received. So first, let me start by thanking you for allowing us to have a few minutes of your time. We're really excited to update the council and community about the expanded programs Wish will be providing in Ketchikan. Our mission is to create a community where everyone has the opportunity to live free of violence, and these new programs will allow us to serve more populations that might be experiencing violence in their lives. Partnerships, including support from the City Council, have allowed us to develop in-house expertise. As a result, we have been able to apply for and succeed in being awarded new funding. With these new programs, we feel that over the next three years, we will continue to decrease the number of Ketchikan residents who are trapped in cycles of violence. In the month of September, Wish was awarded two new grants by the Office of Violence Against Women. We were awarded a three-year, we were awarded three years of funding to support our enhanced services program, which provides free, low-barrier, short-term, short-term mental health counseling to students who have experienced trauma. The OVW funding allows Wish to hire a mental health counselor to serve all the Ketchikan Gateway Borough School District Elementary Schools, and will also support a half-time behavioral health aide. We were also awarded funding for the development of a child advocacy center, and to enhance the training opportunities for the multidisciplinary team that responds to child abuse and child sexual abuse in Ketchikan. This funding will allow us to hire a full-time CAC coordinator that will oversee the department of the center and the team over the next three years. Another statement. We also received a rapid rehousing homeless prevention grant. This is open to folks who are residing in shelter or other places that are not designed for human habitation, such as cars, doorways, and bridges. The homeless prevention grant is open to anyone not currently on a housing voucher, and that is that is in housing or at risk of losing it. There is an income limitation of 50%. Sorry, I got that detail later. Wish was also awarded a grant by the Administration for Children and Families. This funding will allow us to bring back our Family Services Program, which was dissolved in June after the state dissolved the Southeast Family Reunification Program. The new funding will allow us to serve more families, not only those with OCS involvement, increasing but increasing their safety and exiting cycles of violence. Wish was awarded a grant through the Housing Finance Corporation that will enable us to complete the CRIF renovations and provide additional rapid rehousing solutions to victims of violence. We still haven't received the grant paperwork, so details are limited at this time. In total, these grants will support approximately seven full-time benefited positions. So that's an update on our grants, and then I was going to briefly cover our prevention programming over the past fiscal year, and then speak to the things that we're working on for the future. So in FY 2020, our Wish's Prevention Department had three full-time and part-time employees. We had 4,000 interactions with Ketchikan Gateway Borough School Districts across all grade levels. We trained 28 community members in bystander intervention. We had 40 girls signed up for Girls on the Run in Ketchikan and 12 in Metla Catla. We had 10 boys signed up for Let Me Run, and we trained a total of 12 coaches across both programs. Ketchikan's high school wrestling team participated again in coaching boys into men and athletes as leaders, and four Ketchikan high school students attended the Lead On Youth Leadership Conference in Anchorage, and upon returning, they hosted an assembly on substance misuse for Ketchikan high school students and provided materials to their peers on getting help for substance misuse. And then March hit, and we all went into quarantine. But that didn't stop us. We just started thinking of new ways that we could adapt our programming to our new normal. So unfortunately, both our Girls on the Run and Let Me Run seasons were canceled. In their place, instead, we provided all participants with 5K plans, water bottles, healthy snacks, and we provided them exercise clothing upon request. We assembled 300 packets with information on local resources and how to recognize abusive relationships, and coloring pages, and rec center passes that were handed out to families in partnership with the Ketchikan Gateway Borough School District Free Lunch Program. And we moved our bystander intervention program to one-hour-long weekly virtual platform where we train people both in Ketchikan, and we partnered up with Homer, and we did trainings across the state as well. We posted a social media campaign on how to get help or offer support to victims during shelter-in-place orders. So those were our COVID adaptations. Now I'll speak briefly to our new programming that we're very excited about. So we're always looking for new ways to engage youth, especially under the current restrictions of COVID. And so one thing that we're doing this year is where we've created an eight-hour-long youth bystander intervention training, where we're engaging young people to learn how to stand up and speak up when they see things that make them uncomfortable. So over the course of the fall, we're going to be training 20 Ketchikan high school students in bystander intervention skills, one training this month in October and another one in November. Another exciting thing that we have going on is that we are working in partnership with the Ketchikan Wellness Coalition in the development of the Ketchikan Youth Alliance, which is a leadership program in which youth will identify issues that are important to them and create projects to address those issues under the membership, under the mentorship of Wish and KWC staff. So we're very early on in this process, but we've already had between five and 16 students showing up to our weekly meetings and identifying issues that they are finding important, and we're going to start working on encouraging them to figure out ways to address those issues. And lastly, we're going to be working on hiring a peer educator. So we'll be hiring one to two high school students to assist Wish Prevention Staff in facilitating healthy relationship lessons in the high school and in the community, including bystander intervention, and assisting with Wish social media. We know from our research that some of the best ways to reach young people is to employ young people because they understand social media better than I do, and they know what is popular, and they can better inform me how to better reach youth. So those are all my updates, and if you have any questions, I can try to answer them.
Anybody have any questions, comments? You're very busy.
Yes. It's great, though.
But thank you for everything that you guys are doing, so.
Thank you, and thank you for taking the time to listen to me today.
Also, I'd like to thank staff for all their hard work here tonight in regards to the cleaning and disinfecting protocols that are necessary in regard to public meetings such as this. So thank you. Bring this to Item 7A2, Ongoing Review and Discussion of Cruise-Related Issues. It's an item that's been on our agenda since this COVID started, and we've had a lack of cruise industries. So does anybody have anything to report at this particular time?
Sam gonna...
What's that?
I was just asking if Sam was going to make a statement or whatever.
Sam?
Sam?
Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. Do I have the floor?
You do.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to thank Jay Mottani for coming up tonight to talk about the bubble. You know, I've said this before at the table, that we have a unique opportunity to be a part of that bubble because we live on an island. We need to get people like Jay Mottani and the downtown merchants together to start talking, to have a design chart about how we could do this. You know, we sit here, we listen to the same information that the cruise lines are gonna create the bubble, they're going to stick to that bubble, and if we don't make our best effort to be a part of that bubble, then we are remiss in our duties to everybody in this economy and Ketchikan. So, Your Honor, I think after today, I'm gonna be reaching out to yourself and to people like Jay and the folks that are involved in this industry, and see if they're interested in putting together a team to talk about this, to see how we can move this concept forward. You know, if we don't, if we just sit on our hands and watch the cruise lines drive by, they'll survive next season probably, but a lot of us won't. So I'm hoping that when we bring this back, that there's gonna be some interest in it, and that's all I have on this issue, Your Honor.
Thank you for that, Sam. I will go ahead and review the issue and then see what we can do to gather a few people to set up maybe more of a forum in regards to trying to plan or work with the particular issues at hand.
Thank you, Your Honor. I appreciate your hard work.
Yes.
To Councilmember Bergeron's comments. I'm a member of the Ports and Harbors Board. We already started on this a couple of nights ago. We had a discussion at length about the bubble, and the, I sent you and the managers, pardon me, an email that night when I got home about the formation of the very type of board that Councilmember Bergeron referred to in reference to the bubble. The board's consensus was the bubble needs to be as big as possible geographically and with as many participants within it. Part of that email was a suggestion that this group, which needs to begin this discussion immediately, would be the EOC, the industry, KBB, some staff representation. I think it's very important that there be some non-tourism-related representation in this group because the rest of this town is part of the bubble. So I don't know if that satisfies Councilmember Bergeron's idea, but we've already tried to begin on this.
Your Honor?
Go ahead, Sam.
If I could encourage the council to speak right into the mic. I didn't hear anything Councilmember Flora had said. The sound quality is really terrible over the phone.
So Sam, what he said is the Port and Harbor Division has already started this, and they've made some outlines and are requesting the similar thing that you are, to put a committee together to start to address this.
Well, I think the, forgive me for interrupting, Your Honor. I think the committee should be inclusive of people in the industry, such as Mr. Mottani, such as the folks at Tongas, you know, and those kinds of folks.
Thank you. Mr. Kifer?
Sorry about that. Got me in mid-chew, so. I always feel like I'm the bearer of bad news, but I don't know if you're following the Canadian news today. Prime Minister Trudeau basically said that until the US gets their act together, however you define it, in terms of cutting back on their own, their own things, really COVID, they're not gonna be opening up their borders. And it was pretty clear that he indicated...
I'm the bearer of bad news, but...
Yes, I am, and twice.
There's one guy that agreed with you.
I know, it's amazing. It's amazing. Anyway, you know, what that means, I don't know, but clearly, even though the Canadian, you know, prevent, prevention of cruise ships from landing there ends the end of October, it was very clear from the commentary in the Canadian media, this basically meant next year may not be an issue for us. So just keep that in mind, you know, there are things out there that happen entirely unrelated to what we do here, and it didn't sound that the Canadians were interested even remotely in opening up their borders until they feel like we've got our act together. And so just keep that in mind.
Thank you. Abby?
I want to speak to two different things. I think the KBB is the most important spot to start. They do have a TNP program, the Tourism Best Management Practices, that most of the businesses downtown are already involved in, and they've already started this discussion months ago. I briefly talked to Patty this week, and they sound like they are on path for a good plan that involves not only their members, but other people within our community. So I highly encourage everybody to reach out to them, city staff, reach out to them, and see where they're at there. The next thing that I think we're all missing here is we need to get the cruise lines at the table. They ultimately decide... They ultimately decide what that bubble is, along with CDC. So let's talk to them and see what are the biggest parameters we can go? What can we get away with? What can we not? What do we need to start looking at? What is completely off the table in the next six months? I think that's a great place to go to the actual sources and find out what they're expecting, what they're looking for, and why not open that conversation in the future? We've talked about it multiple times last night. They, we have to work with them. So we might as well start now and figure out kind of how we can go through this path together, instead of just on our own.
Thank you. Mark?
I agree with Councilmember Bradbury. That's why I said Clea in my prior comments from the board and to Councilmember Kiefer's comments. The Boards, the Ports and Harbors Board is well aware that there are influences outside of community control, CDC, Seattle, Vancouver, Canada, that could eliminate potentially a season next year. That doesn't mean we shouldn't try. We've heard a lot lately about Clea's willingness to come and talk to us about, well, all manner of things, well, then let's issue the invitation and let's talk to them. There was actually fairly active discussion about, in regards to that, how we can work with them. And to your comments, we can neither dictate to them the terms of what a cruise season should look like in our community nor be dictated to. It's got to be collaborative. They have needs to protect their business interests and the health and safety of their passengers and crew, and we as a community have to be very respectful of that, and obviously there's, just needs to be reciprocity in that discussion.
Thank you. Riley?
Yeah, I think we're all definitely on the right track here. One point I just wanted to make yesterday that came to mind during that presentation, I think what we're talking about right now is in the more hopefully positive side of the spectrum. However, if they go more on that, to the side that Carl hit on yesterday about where they do, the thing where they just have set, they're set tours, and they say, "We're not doing the regular tours, you get on the bus and you go," I think it's also important that if we could reach out and say, "Okay, well, how do we get some of our local..." I mean, under that scenario, that's a little more strict, "How do we get some of our local tours on that list?" Rather than just say, "Okay, all the big cruise line tours can go and everybody else is screwed, you know." So hopefully, it's more on the brighter side, but if it's more on the negative side, I don't know if there's any sway we could have, but I think we should try.
Thank you, Riley. So I have had conversations with Mr. Tibble, with Clea, and I think they would like to engage the community and explain where they see this at today, and hopefully what we could see on a return to sale. So I know staff is real busy with everything they're doing, so at this particular point in time, maybe myself with Mark, we could reach out to the Visitors Bureau and see where we're at in regards to what it would take to put a more combined committee together. And then we'll, I'll talk with Carl and we'll figure out who on staff would be the appropriate person. Is that okay with council? All right, so we'll start down that path. Also, I was informed that, and Carl probably has the update on this, he heard that Canada has started their second wave of COVID, from what I understand. So they're in the depths of the pandemic also and are very concerned about how they respond and what things are going to look like going forward, but right now, I don't think they have any intention to adjust their border restrictions at this particular point in time. Is that what you heard, Carl?
On the way to the meeting last night, I was listening to KRBD, and they had a story about how the World Health Organization had officially documented that Canada was going through a second wave, and I think the Prime Minister's comments last night were likely in response to that.
Thank you. So yeah, we just have to work with the industry and see what's going to happen with Seattle and Canada, and maybe there's other options to reach out to other people to get more information, but we'll start working in that direction. If there's another ounce on that particular item, we'll move into four, which is COVID issues and where we're at with that and emergency ordinances and different things. So Abner, I got a little bit of a question for you, maybe it's more of a public information, if you may. So we presently have a case in the school, and I think there is some information lacking in regards to how the school set up their classes. From what I understand, they made blocks of students that remained together, and I don't know if they traveled from class to class or whatever, but I think their original opening plan was that if that, somebody in that block became a tested positive, that the entire block would be considered exposed. Is that correct?
So there's some variation between the different buildings and the levels of school, Fawn Mountain Elementary versus K High. The way they teach, the way they go from class to class is different, but generally speaking, they've done, they've taken actions to minimize the number of times that students interchange with each other to reduce what they call a cohort size, so that they have a more limited number of students that would interact. And so when they get a positive, they're much, it's much easier for them to identify which students a positive potentially had contact with, and then from what I understand, any classes that students had in common with the positive student from yesterday, they are being asked to quarantine for 14 days and make sure that they don't become symptomatic. So they're not able to, within this room, they, we've all been in the classroom together all day, we would all be asked to quarantine, but they've made those groups as small as they conceivably can in order to spread that out. And that's part of the reason they're using annex facilities and that sort of thing as well, is to have more space and less students per class.
And from what I understand, the start date of this particular event is October 9th, and so the 16th would be the seven-day, and the 23rd would be the 14th, something like that?
It was reported to the EOC that the symptom onset was Saturday, which I don't remember what day of the week that was, but two days prior to that, or not what day, what day of the month that was, excuse me, two days prior to that, they would have been considered infectious, and so that would have gone Thursday and Friday of last week's school week. Whether the student was in school those days, that I don't know either, but yes, potentially, the dates that you mentioned, as we discussed earlier, that would be the end of the first week approximately.
Thank you. I just hope the people that are listening at home that have children that are involved in this particular incident have a better understanding of how the process works, so thank you. Thank you for that. Are there any other questions for him while he's at the podium? Thank you, Abner. So that brings us down to item 7, authorizing budget transfer settlement agreement between the City of Ketchikan, Ketchikan Youth Initiative and Residential Youth Care to transfer ownership of 632 Park Avenue to the city. Yep, I hear Sam.
Audio difficulties. I had a question for Chief Hoag about the last agenda, item 783. Is it okay to go back to that for just a second?
Yes, we can.
Thank you, Your Honor. So let me know when Chief Hoag is up, because I'm on...
He is back, he is back at the podium, Sam.
Thank you. So Chief, in Juneau, two days ago, there were 31 cases of COVID-19 amongst the homeless population. This really very vulnerable population, more than any other, except maybe the elderly have the potential to overwhelm the healthcare system there and here. So with that outbreak in Juneau, has Ketchikan given any thought to a similar occurrence happening here? And what would be our course of action about it? That's my question. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam.
Thank you, Councilmember Bergeron. We have given that some thought, and we've had some discussions on it. We worked with First City Homeless Shelter, as you recall, back early in the pandemic, doing some planning. We do have some locations where we can do isolation if need be, and we've also circled back to that in the past couple of days with First City Homeless Shelter. I was just talking to those folks tonight before the meeting started. We have both reached out to the people in Juneau to find out what lessons learned we can gather from their experience with that specific outbreak, and then we're going to get together and continue to work on our planning here and ensuring that we're implementing solutions that they may be picked up from this recent outbreak.
Thank you, Chief Hoag. I appreciate that answer, and you're considering that possible occurrence. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Thank you for that. So backing up, we did, I did skip over four, which is ordinance number 201920, declaring an emergency due to the continued COVID-19 pandemic, extending an emergency ordinance number 201907 until March 1st, 2021. Item four.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move the City Council approve ordinance number 20-1920, declaring an emergency due to the continuing COVID-19 pandemic, extending emergency ordinance number 20-1907 until March 1st, 2021, and establish infected date.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved in second, Dave. Are there any questions from the council? Hearing, hearing and seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
First run? First run?
Yes.
Got it. Gage?
Yes.
Kiefer?
Yes.
Bradbury?
Yes.
Gas?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes. Flora?
Yes.
Thank you very much for that. So that brings us down to 787, authorizing budget transfer settlement agreement between the City of Ketchikan, Ketchikan Youth Initiative and Residential Youth Care to transfer ownership of 632 Park Avenue to the City of Ketchikan. Do I have a motion?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move the City Council approve a budget transfer of $271,000 from the Community Facilities Development Fund to the 2020 Public Health Department's Overnight Warming Center capital account, and authorize staff to negotiate a settlement agreement between the City of Ketchikan, Ketchikan Youth Initiatives and Residential Youth Care Incorporated, providing for the renovation of 632 Park Avenue to serve as an overnight warming center, $119,354, payment of outstanding KYI contractor claims, $76,646, payment to RYC for Ketchikan Youth Initiative programming activities, $75,000, and transfer of the property back to the city as detailed in the city manager's report dated October 8th, 2020. Set agreement to be submitted to the City Council for formal consideration and approval.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Dave, do you have any elaborations?
No, I think we all are kind of aware of the situation.
All right. Carl, do you have anything to add?
No, I don't, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, Abby?
Could you please tell me how long the outstanding contractor claims for KYI have been in existence?
Mr. Mayor, I'd have to defer to the Public Works Director, who's acting Port and Harbors Director at the same time.
He's consulting with the attorney, so he's a busy guy.
Yeah, we don't need any other staff, we got Mark.
Exactly.
So as I understand the question, you were wondering how long the balances were due?
Yeah, how long they've been outstanding, yeah.
My understanding is that the sprinkler, the majority of the work is associated with the last round of construction, so the majority of the past two balances were the last round of construction, which I think is roughly a year. I don't have an exact date, since I wasn't involved with that, but round numbers, that's an approximation.
I guess for me, I'm not fully aware of this. I've been trying to read as much as I could, but I'm still caught up on the $76,000 that we're paying for the contractor claims, and then on top of that, paying another $75,000 to their partner, somebody they're collaborating with. It's just really, I'm just having a difficult time with that number.
Thank you. Yes, Riley?
Yeah, I'm glad Abby touched on that, because reading through this here, I'm just not quite understand where the $75,000 to RYC falls into this. Could anyone elaborate on that a little? It just doesn't seem clear to me. $75,000 to RYC.
So I think Councilmember Gas, in the process of negotiating a settlement, rather than going through legal actions, that, and of course, we understand that by, the youth need some resources, and if we're going to take this building back, they're going to have to do some other things in regards to outreach programs and stuff, and this particular money, I think, if I remember, Mark, is earmarked for program for kids.
Correct. It's new additional youth programming. Those funds would be managed by RYC to set that up.
Anybody else?
So, so Mark, basically, you're looking at the funding going back, so RYC will then take over the programs, manage them so that they're not completely dissolved.
Right, so RYC will be setting up new, future youth programming. They're putting some effort into how to clearly define that mission, and then they're setting aside an additional $25,000 to make that pot of money $100,000.
All right. Mark?
I appreciate both Councilmember Gas and Bradbury's questions, because these things occurred to me as well, and this is the price that the community is going to pay to have the best opportunity to have a warming center in place in a scenario where we don't really have much time. It's unpleasant, and it's not a city obligation per se as far as that debt goes, so I think the questions are excellent, and I think it's probably healthy that you guys have some heartburn over it. The bad news is, you're going to go through this more times than you can imagine, probably over the next three years. If there is a bright side, we've got some contractors who actually did some work and provided some value, and they're going to get what's coming to them, they're just not going to get it coming to them from the people that owed the money.
Thank you, Mark. Anybody else? Hearing and seeing none, please call the roll.
Zingy? Yes. Bradbury?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Bergeron?
He recorded, yes.
He said yes. Gas?
Yes.
Kiefer?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
That motion passes, brings us to 788, accepting agreement of First City Homeless Service Alaska Community Foundation Coronavirus Nonprofit Relief Fund grant.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move the City Council accept the Alaska Community Foundation Coronavirus Nonprofit Relief Grant as detailed in the city manager's report dated October 8th, 2020, and authorize the city manager to execute the grant documents on behalf of the City Council.
We have a second?
Second.
It's moved in second. Mark, you have anything?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Thank you. Any council members? Hearing and seeing none, please call the roll.
Kiefer?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Bradbury?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Thank you very much. We'll get one more.
Bergeron?
Thank you. All right.
Gas?
Yes.
All right. So just for a point of order, having passed item 7, we wouldn't have to have the executive session tonight, is that correct?
That's correct, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, so we will not be having that executive session. So that brings us down to the manager's report.
Just have two tonight, Mr. Mayor. Just have two tonight, Mr. Mayor. You heard Mr. Meck address the council. You have the EOC recommendation regarding whether or not we should assist in the shutdown of Jackson Street for Halloween. The council wants to weigh in on that. This would be the appropriate time.
Thank you very much. Mr. Gass, then Judy, and then Dave and Abby.
Yeah, well, my way in is I think we should do, as Mr. Meck said, as we've done for 20 years, he laid out the reasons, but there's so many reasons to my decision, which is, one, the kids are going to trick or treat, two, they're in school every day around each other much more closely than they will be outdoors, and it's going to be a horrendous safety hazard with all those kids up there. I live on Monroe, the very bottom. It's packed. Everybody knows it's packed. So I think in the interest of community safety and, you know, the people on Jackson and Monroe, my neighbors are excited for the kids every year. So I think in the interest of safety, we should relook at that.
Thank you. Judy.
So, Your Honor, I have a couple of questions, perhaps, of Mr. Mattson, Deputy Chief Mattson. Thank you. How long do we keep Jackson closed for?
Boy, I'd have to look at the sheet, but I think it's probably around that 5:30, 6 o'clock time till about 8, 8:30. The closure or the reopening of the street really depends on the amount of people that are still in the area. So I think historically it's been that 5:30, 6 o'clock time, and then shut down around 8, 8:30, even 9 o'clock sometimes.
Okay, thank you. So I guess my position on this is it's a safety issue for this year. I understand that, I mean, this came up, I think, last year where we weren't going to do this, or it was discussed that we shouldn't be doing this, and that the people on the street should apply for a permit like other folks do when they want to close the street down. And, you know, personally, I think we should keep doing it. We've done it. It's only a couple hours. But I understand not everybody on the street enjoys that. But this particular year, we have two weeks until it's Halloween, and I just don't feel that we've provided enough notice, and I think that if we were going to, you know, cease to do it, we'd have to start advertising earlier to let the families know because Riley's right, people are going to continue to trick or treat there. I've talked to many people who've been doing it for 20 years. My kid used to do it, and he's got kids. So, I mean, this is something that we've done for a really long time, and I'd really hate to see us stop doing it. I understand the COVID thing, but people are taking steps to be safer, masking, providing the candy outside. Not everybody's going to want to do it, but I think if there is a way for us to do this, we have stopped so many things, which we should have. I'm not saying that we shouldn't have done it. There's many things that people can't do, but man, what are you going to do next? Cancel Christmas? I mean, Santa can't come? I mean, give me a break here. I mean, we just, if we can do this in a safe way, I really think we need to do it. That's all I have.
Thank you, Judy. Dave?
Yeah, I totally understand the COVID issues and wanting to not encourage a situation that could lead to the spread of that. I get that 100%. But I also don't want to be sitting here the day after Halloween because one kid got hit by a car. You know, I'm not willing to take that risk. And we've all been up there. We all know how chaotic it is, even when it's closed off. And I just, you know, I'm not willing to go there. You know, we're going to have to figure out some way. And yeah, well, actually, I've already heard from several families up there who have various plans to try to make it a less, you know, a more socially distanced thing. But even if we canceled it, said we were canceling it tomorrow, or tonight, or a week ago, or even two weeks ago, there'd still be a couple hundred, three or four hundred kids would show up there, and there's nothing we can do about that. All we can do about that is to make it as safe as possible.
Thank you, Dave. Abby?
I just want to echo everything that they've said. That's pretty much what I had. Number one is public safety, and it is a Saturday afternoon slash night. Who knows what people are going to be doing earlier that day? Being distracted, drinking and driving, those things are, they happen every day, not on Halloween, so having a holiday, it's probably the first holiday everybody's really gotten out, or maybe go out, I don't know. It's an outdoor event, you never know. But I just really would like to encourage the KPD to block off the road.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I think that, yeah, I hate to have to be the bearer of a kid hit by a car, but I also think that maybe this is an opportunity to start talking about the fact that that road is dangerous year-round. And I noticed that there's a speed sign up at the top now, and they do it in Washington, but I'm honestly, I think there needs to be speed bumps on that road because I've almost been hit just going, driving up there with people coming down, or the other way around, coming down the hill and having somebody rip up the hill. So, in my own, you know, just vehicle on vehicle. But that road's been dangerous since I was a kid. And honestly, I would love to see some trick or treaters at my house. My grandmother used to love it, but in the last four years, I haven't seen one. They won't climb the stairs. I dare them to climb the stairs.
It's scary climbing those stairs.
I know.
Thank you. Yes.
Well, I heard the candy at General Lee's house sucks. Oh, no, that's not what I meant to say. So it seems like we have another holiday tradition. So for three years in a row, there's been one objector that we receive an email from, and it's always two weeks before. And the first year, I replied and said, really, if there's going to be an objection to this, the time to bring this up is May or June, to give the community enough time, and maybe that would also give that person some time to actually engage with their neighbors. I drove down Jackson Street yesterday, and it's decorated. Not every house, but it's decorated. People are having Halloween on Jackson Street this year. So then, but this is literally the third year in a row. So if there are folks on Jackson Street who think this isn't the best thing for their neighborhood, and it is their neighborhood, I would offer two suggestions. Don't wait till two weeks before because once it becomes a public safety thing, you're very unlikely to carry the day, and perhaps talk to your neighbors and maybe come up with an alternative that works better for most of Jackson Street.
Thank you, Mark. So it sounded like the majority of the council members are in favor, Carl, of making sure that we respond to public safety issues with Jackson Street.
I got the direction, Mr. Mayor.
So Abner, at this time, could you talk a little bit about, and I understand that you have a job to do, and you have to be on that action side of it, and that's okay. But if we're moving forward, what do you have to offer us?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate the opportunity to talk about this for just a minute. The EOC has put out, and we are putting out, some information to the community on recommendations, on ways that you can change some of your Halloween activities to make them a little more safe, to reduce what risk level you're subjecting yourself or your neighbors to. The CDC has highlighted door-to-door trick-or-treating in a traditional fashion where you come just inside the door and get the candy as a higher-risk activity, and we don't want to really encourage those. We do have COVID in Ketchikan. We have three community spread cases right now. So we want to get that message out to the community. I'm also a realist. I understand that kids are going to go trick-or-treating, and as a council, as an EOC, we've taken the approach throughout this pandemic, after the initial lockdown, of educating our community on what the risks are and letting them make those informed decisions, giving them the tools, explaining the risks, and let them make the decision. And so I get that, and I think we should continue to do that. So part of my purpose in making the recommendation that I did is, one, it would seem a little bit off to, on one hand, recommend against these higher-risk activities, and without even allowing you to have the discussion, to simply recommend that we go ahead and block off Jackson Street and allow it to happen. So part of my purpose for making the recommendation that I did was to kind of force this to come before you and have the discussion and be able to get this message out to the community. We will continue to put out more messaging as we approach Halloween on different activities that can be done. I also hadn't had the opportunity to speak with Mr. Meck, for example, prior to writing that memo, and so I've heard from some more of the residents that they're planning things or some of the alternatives to make that a little safer, and I 100% agree. If people are going to come anyway, I also run ambulances, right? We don't want to be out there picking a kid up off the street because it wasn't safe for them. So that's what I have to share. We'll put out some more messaging on holiday safety in general as we come closer to these different holidays. But I just encourage the community to know what your risk is, know what activity, the risk level of the activity that you're choosing to do, and then be respectful of the people who have different needs than you. And yes, there's always people who don't support trick-or-treating. There may be more of them this year because they are that at-risk population who doesn't want a trick-or-treater. Don't go throw eggs at their door because they have their lights off, you know? Be respectful in our community and just take a lookout for each other. So that's what I have.
Thank you, Abner. Carl?
I just want to follow up on your earlier remarks about the letter that we laid on the table tonight from Cindy Christian of ADEC. As you'll recall, over a year ago, we told the council that we had gotten a letter from DEC saying we had violated EPA clean drinking water regulations, and we had 18 months to build a filtration plant. We did go up to Anchorage to meet with Ms. Christian and her staff. It was February, February, March. It was a very productive meeting. They in turn have been in touch with EPA. Things seemed to go quiet for a while, so we, with your help, Mayor Severson, got Senator Sullivan involved. He sponsored a conference call with us, members of EPA. Ms. Christian has now been in touch with Region 10. This letter is an acknowledgement that we are pursuing a credible alternative to filtration and that they've temporarily suspended the order directing us to pursue that while these negotiations continue. We have a meeting with Jacobs Engineering and ADEC coming up in the near future. We're going to have to put some paperwork together to try to make the case to EPA, but I'm cautiously optimistic. I'm not going to give you an ironclad guarantee, but I think we're in a much better position than we were when I brought the letter saying you have 18 months to build a filtration plant. So I'm encouraged, and that's all I've got tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Carl. That brings us down to City Clerk's file.
None, Your Honor.
City Attorney's file. Future agenda items.
Your Honor.
Oops. Yes.
I did want to, I'm sorry, I did want to inform everyone that there is absentee voting for the general election starting on Monday, October 19th, starting from 8 to 5 at the Rex Center. So if you want to get out and early vote again, you can, you have that capability.
What date is that in?
The two week? It's two weeks, and then the day before, they'll have, they'll be doing it. They're calling it absentee. We called it early, but it's the same. There'll be two people working there, and then it should relieve some of the issues that might be at the individual precincts of people lining up, hopefully.
Thank you. Nope, that's good.
Your Honor?
Yes.
Yeah, I had a couple of things I wanted to bring up. Back when we were having our discussion about the semi-infamous statement of past racial issues, one idea that came up at that period of time was that we have, we needed to have a day recognizing first responders. And I'm not sure, did I miss something? Did we not go anywhere with that? Or if so, I'd like to have that come back for discussion.
You were going to put that together.
I may have missed the memo. It happens sometimes.
Mr. Mayor, I do think we did transmit a memorandum to council about that, and I can get that memo back to you again.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Chief White and I discussed it and provided Carl with a memo. In short, we recommended due to COVID that we probably not have something in person, but that we do something maybe to recognize the responders and then look at doing something more in person in future years, I believe, is what we.
Yeah, I had a sense it was going to be a yearly thing. It was going to be going forward, so.
But we'll make sure we get the letter.
Okay, thank you. The other thing, before our discussion tonight about coming up with a committee to start talking to the cruise lines about the bubble, I was going to raise the issue, this came up a lot during the recent campaign, the idea of why we do not have a standing tourism committee. And I would still like to see that happen. I know there's been some suggestion, why don't we just use the Visitors Bureau? And that's a good option, except I want to see it broader than that. I want to see it, as Councilmember Flor mentioned, I want to see it include members of the community that aren't part of the Visitors Bureau. I think we need to be moving that direction so in the future, you know, we can get a sense of just what, and it's going to be a challenge because there still are parts of this community that, for whatever reason, perhaps, are not as excited about the tourism industry as other parts. I think we need to pay attention to that, and we need to actually have a committee that makes recommendations to the council on these issues going forward that includes the entire community. And so I want to see that. That, I think, is probably, at this point, a little separate than the discussion about this initial thing. I agree right now, the bubble issue is something that's got to be tackled right away because the longer we wait on that, the more likely we're going to end up with something we don't like at all. But I think in the long term, I think the idea of a tourism advisory community for the council is a good thing.
Thank you, Dave. Mr. Gass?
Yeah, so back on the port issue again one more time. Doing some thinking, and one concern that I think we need to be really aware of is the possibility of, with every day that goes by on this port issue, a threat that we face is our last two remaining cruise liners, Carnival and Royal, that it's still a possibility that they could wash their hands of this at any time and go to Ward Cove. So I was, I just wanted to make it official and do it the proper way and give notice to ask if, at our 21st meeting after we meet with the attorney and discuss those things, if we could be in a position at that time to come up with a decision on that meeting.
Already been done. So there will be a motion at the end of the agenda.
Oh, sorry.
No, no, that's good. Good. That's fine.
You're right.
All right. So that brings us down to mayor and council comments. Judy?
I just have a couple of things. I do want to recognize Mark Hilsen for all the efforts that he's put in with our nonprofits, both from the KYI as well as First City Homeless Services, but also that team of people that have, I don't know, I think they've brought about $3 million into our community. So I do understand that KYI, that was a, you know, to give that money is a bit of a, gave some people some heartburn, but we also need to recognize the citizens who are volunteers that actually, and the employees that go out and write these grants for us, and that make some of these things possible. And our own staff, they work together with them to make these things happen. So I just want to thank Agnes and her team for everything that they've done for us, and Mr. Hilsen for all his efforts. That's all I have.
Thanks, Judy. Riley?
Nothing, Your Honor.
General Lee?
Yeah, just to add to the, the proclamation on the disabilities, I, I think it's important to realize that the Olmstead decision happened in 1999. It wasn't that long ago. And Justice Ginsburg was the author of that particular bill. It held that people with disabilities were unlawfully segregated in institutions and had the right to live integrated lives in the community. Justice Ginsburg explained that institutionalizing people with disabilities constitutes discriminations for two reasons. First, it creates the impression that these individuals are incapable and unworthy of living in the community. And second, it severely diminishes the everyday life activities of individuals, including family relations, social contacts, work options, economic independence, and educational advancements and cultural enrichment. My accident happened in 1995, and I lived it. And it's an interesting thing because you don't really know what you're living till you have to look back. And you don't realize the discrimination that you felt until you look back. And I really appreciate Mayor Severson for reading this proclamation, and I, I appreciate the people that came to accept that proclamation, and the strides that both of those young people have made in the last 10 years. On Saturday, we were going to be doing a Women's March down on the, on Birth 2, and we're doing everything safe at 11:00 AM in honor of Ruth Ginsburg. And so it's been one month since she passed away. Not exactly to the date, but the 17th. She passed away on the 18th of September. So if anybody wants to join us, we'll be there.
Thank you, General Lee.
Rain or shine.
Sam?
Thank you, Your Honor. Jackson Street, Halloween candy. I, I think that we're in the middle of a pandemic, and I don't think it's worth it to, to risk. And we have an outbreak at the school. We have some community spread in the community. I don't think it's responsible to go forward with that. So I want that in the minutes going forward. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. Mr. Kifer?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Abby?
Just want to remind everybody that Divas and Devo's is this weekend, so get out and support them. They've been, most of the nonprofits or arts community has been pretty flexible with COVID and have really kind of gone above and beyond to create something for people to enjoy safely and at home. So get out and support them.
Mark?
So I've been here four nights in a row, and I will not be attending tomorrow.
Thank you. So I have nothing tonight. So with that, it brings us to.
Move to adjourn, Your Honor.
You will stand adjourned. Here we are, adjourned. What's that?